Motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you. Moving on to public comments. Public comments, the portion of our meeting where anybody can speak about agenda items for the evening for three minutes or less. Please give us your name and your address and make sure the microphone is on at the podium and do sign in. So, uh, welcome everybody and, um, public comments is now open.
Hi, everybody. Becca Schoenborn, 2721 Nelson Drive here in Menominee. Um, I'm the executive director of Downtown Menominee, Inc., and I'm here to speak to you on item number five B on the agenda as it relates to our 2025 funding request. As I've mentioned at previous council meetings, Downtown Menominee has requested $40,000 in funding for the 20, for 2025 to assist with our programming, events and administrative costs associated with our work. The increase in funds being requested this year is due to the discontinuation of accounting services we have been provided by the city of Menominee until this point. This organization was created and has been a partner to the city of Menominee since the early nineties. And I'm hopeful that the partnership will continue long after we're all retired. But for that to happen, we all have to have an investment in our shared downtown in this moment. I've heard at multiple meetings over the past few months that the city supports Downtown Menominee's efforts, and this is how you can directly show us that. I understand that budgets are tight for everybody this year. Our organization is no different. The line item for our city subsidy was added to our budget in 2007. So while these funds were never guaranteed, they have been provided for many years and contribute to a significant portion of our annual budget. If our organization ceased to exist, the work we do falls back onto the city of Menominee at a cost much higher than the $40,000 investment that we're asking for. Our events welcome over 15,000 people into the district for family fun, dining, live music, holiday cheer, shopping, and overnight stays at the Cobblestone. These are events that we offer free of charge because we know that quality of life is extremely important to the human experience and builds community amongst locals and visitors alike. Our two largest events are the Community Cookout and the Winter Days Parade, which cost a combined $20,000 each year and over 300 hours of volunteer time from our Board of Directors. Another significant expense is our sign grant and our beautification grant that we provide to downtown businesses and property owners each year, giving out about $6,000 annually. Unfortunately, if we don't, we don't have the ability to cut staff or reduce benefits. We have one employee, me, who is paid the minimum required wage to maintain our Main Street accreditation with the W E D C, and we have no benefits to cut. This means that the obvious places that we would need to cut expenses are from our grant programming and our events. And I think we can all agree that losing those grants, the Community Cookout in the Winter Days Parade would be devastating to our community. As I've mentioned previously, our organization is actively working toward financial independence, but that work takes more than a month to accomplish. Since learning of the likelihood that our funding would be reduced, we have removed the bid cap. We are exploring bid expansion currently. We've discussed the potential of increasing our mill rate for our bid and have begun conversations with the Chamber of Commerce for future collaborations. We have a plan to not need funding from the city of Menominee in the future, but we need your help to ensure that we can make it that long. If $40,000 is out of the budget, please consider at least funding us at the same level as 2024 to allow us time to make the necessary changes to be financially secure going forward. I love getting to plan events for all of you to enjoy, and I'm hopeful that I get to continue that going into next year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Becca. Just a general reminder, we're gonna try to keep everything to three minutes this evening. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Rowley, 300 Crescent Street, Menominee, Wisconsin, and I'm gonna keep this to three minutes, Randy. So first, I'd like to thank all of you for your support. The last time I was here a couple of weeks ago, you'll notice that that money is going to good use and the siding is going up on my building right now. However, I am here on a, wearing a different hat today, and that is supporting Downtown Menominee. This will be the last time that I am here to show, to represent Downtown Menominee as I term off the board at the end of the month. But I feel this is a very, very important thing to talk about. I've been on the board for six years. I've been on the Executive Committee for five of those six years. I have seen this organization do some amazing things. I've also seen this organization overcome some very difficult challenges. This organization is comprised of entrepreneurs and business owners and property owners and local professionals who have the skill set to solve challenges and to solve problems that nobody else can solve. So when we're here and we're talking about budget issues and we're talking about cash flow issues, these are things that as business owners, we look at and we address in our everyday lives. The difference being if our budget doesn't balance and we don't have cash flows, the things that we have to cut are Christmas presents for our kids. So this is a group of people that are very understanding of the situation that we're in. We completely get it that the city has budget issues and there is a deficit and you cannot spend money that we do not have. But you can utilize the Downtown Menominee Board as an asset to help figure out how do we fix this? Utilize the resources that we have with our Board of Directors and how it is comprised and what it's made up of. Mary, last week or two weeks ago, I heard you say, every year this gets harder and harder. And while I'll agree, we can definitely work better or work together better to make sure that it's not harder and harder every single year. We as business owners and property owners are 100% invested into this community. We have gambled our entire livelihoods on the success of Menominee and specifically Downtown Menominee. So we're asking the city and the council to continue the support of that, of downtown. Now, what are we asking for and what do you get out of that ask? So initially, we'd asked for the 40,000. We understand it. That's not what we're here to even talk about tonight. We're here to talk about the 25,000 that you got, that the city has given us historically. For that, you get 15 business owners and property owners that are going to act as a, as an arm of the city to provide, sorry, uh, to provide economic support for the city of Menominee and to grow. Randy, you're laughing at me and I lost my train of thought on that. But you get 15 business owners that are gonna do this job for you. Imagine if the city of Menominee had to hire an economic development manager to fill the shoes that we're currently doing as volunteers with a $25,000 investment to pay half of our one employee's salary. The salary and benefits alone are going to probably be triple that. So what we're asking for is one more year. In short, get us through this. We are being proactive in the things that we're doing to ensure that we no longer need this subsidy. We've removed the bid cap, which is going to raise our, uh, budget by 15 to $17,000, depending on the assessed values. We have discussions and have already started to lay out the groundwork to expand the bid, which should be another $10,000. We're looking at our events and trying to figure out how can we make our events more profitable. Winter Days Parade, we plan on charging $100 for a float next year, which will be $5,500, right there. Thirty-five thousand dollars, which is more than what we're asking for. Cut our budget by 50% next year, but fund our organization this year and allow us to solve the problem that we have. Thank you for your time. I respect the decision that you guys come up with.
You were more than three minutes, Jeffrey.
A lot more, Randy. You're Canadian, man.
All right.
I'm Mike Stewart. I am the, this year's president of Downtown Menominee. I live at N 5292, 558th Street, Menominee. I don't have a lot to add other than what they've said, other than I am someone who does operate a business downtown. Uh, I have moved my family to this community, and I think that we're doing good work and work that is very important to the city of Menominee, to the people of Menominee and surrounding communities. So I also ask that, that this council vote to continue to fund our, our operation this year. And hopefully, we're hoping that going forward, we can ask less and less and less until we're self-sufficient. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Hello, Jeremiah Jourdain at N 8412, 578th Street, Colfax, Wisconsin. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Downtown Menominee today, where I serve or have the pleasure to serve as a vice president. I don't have a lot to add beyond what these fine folks have, have shared. But I do want to share that I myself, as a property owner, I'm contributing nearly $3,000 a year to this endeavor. Uh, as we restore the 614 main building, we hope, and I look, I'm excited and look forward to contributing more to this bid. If we look back at what downtown used to be, right, vacant storefronts, shuttered buildings, we can see that we've come a long way as an organization. We also have a lot further to go. We don't want to stop, right? If we choose not to support Downtown Menominee, we will be very financially constrained this upcoming year, to the point where we might have to shut the doors. And that would not only stop progress, but roll it back. And so on behalf of Downtown Menominee and myself, I urge you to consider funding at full force this year, or at, at the requested amount this year. And know that we have a path and we have a plan to become financially independent and continue to drive home our mission of restoring vibrancy and revitalization downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Hello, uh, my name's Dustin Olson. I'm a development officer for the Mabel Tainter at, uh, 205 Main Street East here at Menominee. Um, and I'm here this evening to ask that the city council consider fully funding the Mabel Tainter at prior funding levels, but certainly understanding budget constraints that at the very least, we hope that you'll consider funding as much as is possible for the Mabel Tainter in your upcoming budget. Uh, while we certainly understand the challenges that the city faces in balancing your budget, the Mabel Tainter, uh, we feel is an important asset to the community. Um, and we think a public investment in this organization serves the greater community in several ways. Uh, first and foremost, we're, is an historic building that showcases and celebrates much of our community and region's history. Um, secondly, we're the only performing arts center in our community, and we feel we fill a vital role in bringing local and nationally touring acts and entertainment to the community. Um, and third, and probably most importantly, we are an economic driver for the community. Um, our building sees more than 20,000 visitors over the course of an average year. Um, these are folks who are coming in for events, tours and shows. Um, the National Organization of the Americans for the Arts calculates that the average event attendee spends an additional $31 in the surrounding community when attending a theater show, and that's above and beyond the cost of their ticket. What that translates to is spending on meals, drinks, overnight stays, transportation and more, right here in our community. Uh, specifically, if you look at the Mabel Tainter, uh, when we look at our ticket sales over the last five years, we've been able to determine that more than 60% of our ticket holders are attendees from outside the city of Menominee. And that translates to thousands of visitors each year coming from beyond Menominee to spend time and dollars in this community because of the Mabel Tainter. For these reasons, we feel like the city's investment in the Mabel Tainter is an investment in preserving our history, making the art accessible to all in our community and driving business and economic growth in our downtown and beyond. Uh, we understand the need for a balanced budget. We certainly appreciate the work all of you have done in finding solutions and making these tough decisions. Um, we hope that this year and beyond, we can continue to build a stronger Menominee together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Public comment is still open. If anybody else would like to speak, now is your opportunity to do so. Last call.
Can Jeff come up and read the rest of his list?
Last call for public comments? Okay, we're gonna close public comments and keep on moving with the rest of our meeting. Uh, under unfinished business, we do not have any this evening. That moves us into new business, which would be 5A. The review of the 2025 Water, Wastewater, Solid Waste and Stormwater Utility Operating Budgets. David, I see you in the back room there. Do you want to come up and speak or Mr. Schofield, do you want to get us started?
Yeah, uh, in your packets are the budgets for Water, Wastewater, Solid Waste and Stormwater Utility. Uh, Jeremy, Paul and Megan are here to talk about those, and so I would invite them up. Um, probably Jeremy first.
All right, Jeremy, come on up to the podium and, and tell us a little bit about your water situation. What are you thinking?
Well, um, I wish I, I thought it was on, but it was, or off, but it was on. My budget's pretty, uh, simple this year, just preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. There's, uh, nothing really new. We're gonna maintain what we have. Things are breaking every day, so, but got a pretty talented staff that's able to fix it very cost-effectively, so.
Okay, um, you know, sometimes people through the community, they, they ask certain questions like, um, you know, uh, what are we gonna do about different chemicals in our water and any mandates coming up for anything like that as far as down the road, or are we gonna stay same as we are at the present?
Stay the way we are as far as I know.
Steady as she goes?
Everything's.
No major, no major purchases in your budgets?
No major purchases in my budget, no.
All right, should be simple then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, uh, water. How about wastewater, Paul? Oh, do we want to approve water first and then keep going? How do you want to do that, Eric?
We, we would want to have, uh, each budget approved separately, even though they're all on the same, uh, item 5A. But if you're, if you're okay in supporting the budget that's presented for each of the departments, they need to be done in a separate motion. And, and one thing I would add to, if I, if I could, one of the things that's unique about the utilities versus our general operating fund is that the utilities are revenue generators, so they do, they provide the funding for their operations through the revenue they generate versus the taxing entity, like we go out to our constituents for a general operating budget.
Okay, well, let's do water first then, and so if anybody would like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Matthew?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025 Water Utility Budget as presented.
Okay, is there a second, Laura?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Okay, we need a roll call vote?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough? Yes. Schwabs?
Yes.
Gantz?
Yes.
Great. And then that brings us to wastewater. Paul, if you want to take the podium, tell us a little bit about what you got going on down there. Anything exciting or new, or are we good for a while now?
Um, well, we're hoping to buy a sludge truck next year, so that's in the budget. Um, other than that, the budget's pretty similar to last year. Uh, our sludge truck is, uh, 2009, I think it is, and, uh, it's given us a lot of problems, spent the shop quite a few times this year. And, uh, we'd, we'd like to replace it next year.
What are you hauling in that truck that's giving you so much trouble?
Well, we're hauling, uh, uh, thickened, digested sludge from the treatment plant to our storage site at Cardinal Glass. So we're using it every day, Monday through Friday, several loads a day.
Oh, I see.
So it makes short trips, goes through a lot of tires, a lot, a lot of turns, uh, in-town traffic mostly, but.
Pretty important.
Yeah, we have had a lot of trouble with it, and when it's been down, we've had a private contractor come in and haul for us, and that gets kind of expensive, so.
Right, right. Any questions for Paul at all? If anybody wants to support the, um, with a motion, you can support the budget with a motion. Lee?
Yeah, I'll make a motion approving the wastewater, solid waste, uh, utility budget as presented.
Very good, good motion. Is there a second to that motion? Laura?
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gantz?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the solid waste, um, and stormwater utility. But, um, I don't know if Megan's here this evening. Oh, she is. Hi, Megan. I've got a timer on you. Tell us a little bit about your budgets this evening.
Yeah, so the, so we'll start with the solid waste utility. Um, the good news is there's no proposed rate increase for that utility. Pretty much business as usual out there. You will see that the balance, the budget is not fully balanced. That is a carryover for some blacktop that we were hoping to get done this fall, but we're not, we're not able to do that. Other than that, we have some planned increases in our curbside hauling and the hauling from the drop-off site. Those are both in the last year of their, um, agreement with the city, so in 2025, we will be working to put that out for bids. Um, so that is one of the things we'll be doing in 2025, but we also can plan to do an electronics collection again in the spring and a hazardous waste collection in the fall. With that, if you have any questions?
Well, solid waste is, I mean, I get so many compliments on what you've got going on down there, the, the new cement pads for the, the roll-offs and, and a clean environment, a good crew. Thank you for the hard work down there and thank your crew also, and, and I think everybody here, uh, in this room would agree that we've got a good thing going. So if anybody'd like to make a motion to support the solid waste operating budget, you can do that at this time. Solid waste.
Are we doing stormwater and solid waste separately?
That is separate.
Okay, so I'll move to approve the 2025 solid waste, this little utility budget as presented.
Thank you. Eric?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gantz?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Stormwater.
And Schlue, sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
And stormwater.
All right, so stormwater budget, um, same thing. There is no proposed rate increase for this year, um, and this budget is balanced. Um, one of the more notable changes in expenditures you'll see in there is in our accounting and auditing, um, line item. We are looking, um, to hopefully do a rate study, um, and have a third party look at our rates, what we need um, for expenditures and what kind of revenues we may need, um, to help increase our, um, stormwater facilities, maintain what we have, et cetera, um, into the future. Um, so that's probably the biggest change in expenditures that we have in 2025. Um, the city has, I mean, uh, MS4 permit from the DNR, which guides, um, the majority of our expenditures in this budget. Um, there are six program areas in that permit that we have, um, tasks that we have to do, reporting, tracking, et cetera, um, which are public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site pollutant control, post-construction stormwater management, pollution prevention and TMDL management. So these are tasks that are not only done by myself and David Schofield, the, uh, Building Inspection Department, the Community Services Department, Cedar Corporation, um, Finance Department, helping out with a lot of these tasks. Um, so it's a kind of a very broad effort, um, to get all this done across the city. With that, I'll take any questions.
Sounds good to me. Um, if anybody'd like to support this, we could do so with a motion, Randy.
I'm, I'll make a motion to support the stormwater utility budget as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion, Mary?
I would second Randy's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Luther?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough? Yes. Schwabs?
Yes.
Gantz?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That takes us down to 5B, the review. Oops, I'm sorry. Um, go ahead, Lee.
Yeah, I need a correction on the motion I made with the wastewater. There wasn't a comma between the wastewater and solid waste, and I said wastewater and solid waste. So that needs, I don't know, what we need to do, but I.
It's, it's noted, Lee. We'll, we'll make sure that we adjust it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee, for catching that. Okay, thank you. Moving on to, um, 5B, review of the 2025 Tax Increment Financing Operating Budgets, discussion and possible motion. I'm gonna hand this off to Eric, um, right off the bat, Eric.
Yeah, sure. So presented in front of you today is the 2025 Tax Increment District Financing Operating Budgets. We have seven active tax increment districts here in the city that we utilize to provide tax increment financing for development as well as improving infrastructure within our city. Inside of those different budgets and those different TIDs, you will find different expenses for projects that are being proposed or are in current activity for 2025. Two of the things that we'll make note of, and you had some people that were speaking today during public comments, the last handful of years, we've utilized Tax Increment District 15 to help fund both the Mabel Tainer subsidy as well as the Downtown Menominee subsidy. Those recommendations that were listed included the same 25% reduction that we had recommended on the subsidies through the general fund, which would put a, the Mabel Tainer at a recommendation of $45,000, downtown at a recommendation of $18,750. The funds that are created out of the tax increment districts are based upon the increment of value that is created from the original base value of when those districts were created to what they've now begun to accrue as they've gained value in assessment. And that's from our local assessment, not manufactured assessment, that you would see in equalized values in our industrial parks.
Hey, thank you, Eric. Uh, any questions for Eric? Um, I think one of the things, aspects here tonight is, um, not only approving the TID, um, budgets, but also approving the dollar amounts that fall into TID 15, uh, you know, whether it's, um, full funded or partly funded or less than partly funded. Uh, I guess that would be the council's, um, decision to this evening on how you want to handle that. I know that in our budgetary numbers, uh, it's been, uh, calculated at the 25% less, uh, amount for this year versus last year. Uh, now that doesn't have to be exactly 25%, it could be more or less than 25%, but those are the numbers that Eric has been working with, uh, calculating, um, the dollar values. So that being said, um, I guess I would let you elaborate on that, and then we'll open it up for council discussion.
Sure. One of the, one of the things to take into consideration as to whether or not you want to, whatever level you decide you want to fund the two subsidy organizations making the request. If you fund them more than the, than the request, that just means out of those funds that we have available in Tax Increment District 15, we have less money available for various projects that could come in and renovations for that district. Which, that's fine. That's what we've done here in the past. We recommended the 25% reduction to keep in fairness with the other subsidies that are paid directly through our general operating fund that is tax-levered.
Very good. Does everybody understand how that works and what, what we're faced with here? Okay, so that being said, Laura, go ahead.
Are we allowed to move funds from one TID to another TID?
You can only do that if a TID has been designated as a donor TID to receive funds from another TID. Now, one of the, one of the things to, to keep in mind, and we're not gonna be able to do that tonight, is we want to make TID 15 a donor TID to TID 19, so that way we can move funds into the TID 19, because TID 19 has a different project plan than TID 15, and we know that there are some developments that are coming through. You saw Mr. Rowley's development that came in last week. You're gonna end up seeing, uh, Mr. Jourdain's development come on December 16th. So we do have some active items that we're gonna look at pushing through on development agreements as well as some other things coming up. We'll have funding eventually through, uh, Cedar Corporation for their pay-go on a development agreement that we did earlier this year through 19. And then, uh, we have some interest in some other developmental properties that I can't go into right at this moment. So I, I probably gave you a little bit more than what you asked for when it comes about moving the money around. It's possible, just depends on what the project plans are for those particular tax increment districts. It's a great question.
Okay. So I'd like to open it up for discussion with the council if, if, uh, if you'd like, um, we can take it from there. Um, I, floor is yours. Sorry, Cory, Cody?
Um, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to change the Mabel Tainter subsidy to 60,000 and the Main Street of Menominee subsidy to 25,000 in the TID 15 budget.
Yep. Okay, then there's a motion on the floor. Uh, I would need a second. Laura?
I will second Cody's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, additional discussion? Lee?
Well, that leaves us in the problem with what we're going to do of the general operating fund with those, that we're gonna raise all, all of them also.
We wouldn't be able to do that through the motion here. These ta, the tax increment district budgets are, are separate. But if you're asking, does that create a conflict, I, it could maybe be.
That's what I'm asking. I realize you can't fund them all of 19, but, uh, but I see a problem doing this. I think we gotta be consistent. And probably, there may be a few things that we're cutting right now. I'm thinking right now stepping stones as far as the need of the community might be a little bit greater than maybe what the Mabel is right now. And I support them both, but personally, but, you know, I think we, if we're gonna start playing games, I think we better be careful.
Okay, additional discussion? Um, Cody?
By my estimation, the council kind of threw out the notion of fairness when it cut the subsidies the last meeting. And now this TID budget can support the, uh, requests from 2024 at that level. So I think that's what we should do because these organizations, even more so than the nonprofit organizations that, um, you know, came to the general budget, provide such a massive return on investment. This is supporting. Provides such a massive return on investment, this is supporting small businesses, it's bringing people into downtown as a huge economic boon. So I understand that it's not necessarily fair to the other nonprofit organizations that we cut. But, you know, I think we can fund these at their twenty twenty four level and keep it consistent for this year. The organizations are already on notice that we're looking at cutting these subsidies and reforming the system. So I think they got, kind of got the message there. And so that's the purpose of my motion tonight, is we can afford this, so I think we should. Due to the investment, or due to the return on investment provided by these organizations.
Additional discussion? Jeff?
I'm okay with Cody's motion on the Main Street of Menominee. When it comes to the Mabel Tainer though. I don't know how many of you council members were on the council when they came in front of us, asking us to give them a liquor license. And we were told by the president of the board that with this liquor license. That will generate enough income to where eventually in the future. They'll be able to get off of the subsidy. And so they've been operating the spirit room now for several years. And I think that the fifteen thousand that we're cutting them. They must be at least profiting fifteen thousand a year in that spirit room. So as they had promised. Years ago, when we gave them their license, that they would eventually cut back on request for subsidy. So I think we should just stick with the forty five thousand for the Mabel Tainer. Even though I'm on the board and probably could catch some flack next meeting.
Matthew?
Yeah, I, I agree with Jeff, I think for sure we have to fund downtown Menominee and keep them going, I love the Mabel. And there's other, you know, opportunities for them to create revenue with, you know, more shows or the spirit room and that. But I think we need to consider keeping downtown Menominee afloat for another year and. Cut by fifty percent next year, or cut completely if we have the grant program or contingency fund in place from there, so.
Eric?
I think I would agree with Jeff and Matthew here, that I, I think I would agree to increase the downtown Menominee. But not as much so for the Mabel Tainer.
Hey, Lee?
What are we giving Main Street, no, I thought it was twenty?
Twenty five.
In twenty four, twenty twenty four, we gave them twenty five thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else in discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. What, we, yes, Matthew?
Can we vote to amend the motion, or do we have to?
We voted on the motion, I mean.
We would let the motion either pass or fail first. And then we'd bring it back if somebody wanted to make a new motion, that's how we would handle this this evening. Do you want to read back the motions, Kate?
Motion was made by Gents, seconded by McCullough. To approve the twenty twenty five TID budgets with the Mabel Tainer being funded at sixty thousand dollars and downtown Menominee at twenty five thousand dollars.
Okay, that's the motion on the floor, roll call vote, please.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Can, can you, can you?
So, to repeat.
I'm not sure what.
If you're voting yes on the motion, it's for increasing both the Mabel Tainter and downtown Menominee subsidies. Higher than what the administration is recommending.
Okay, I understand that, and I'm not certain if. You're good, then I vote no.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
No.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
No.
Schlue?
No.
Summerfeld?
No.
Luther?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, brings us back to square one on the motions, if somebody'd like to make a new motion, you can certainly do so at this time, Matthew.
Oh yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five. TID budgets, not as presented, but with full funding to the downtown Menominee. With the twenty twenty four subsidies at twenty five thousand dollars.
Okay, and.
Could I get clarification on that about what do you want to do with the funding with the Mabel Tainer? Cause I understand it on your motion, you'd like the fund downtown at twenty five thousand.
And have the Mabel Tainer at forty five thousand.
Okay, clarified, Ben? Good with that motion, is there a second to that motion? Cody?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on it? Roll call vote.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
No.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Hey, motion passes, moving on to the next piece of business. Uh, can't.
Thank you.
Very well, sir, review of the twenty twenty five construction fund capital budget. Discussion, possible motion, Eric, if you want to lead it off.
Yeah, so our, our twenty twenty five construction fund capital budget, it's kind of an odd one here for you. So twenty twenty five, we haven't borrowed funds yet for twenty twenty five. So what is presented in front of you is a mix of both projects that we have currently in progress, that we do have funds. For as well as projects that we would like you to consider in twenty twenty five. Now bear in mind, if you do approve this particular budget, it doesn't mean that that is what you're gonna be beholden to. When we actually look to borrow for capital projects, these are just recommendations for as we move forward. Into twenty twenty five, so when we're actually looking at borrowing those funds for those projects. We will bring the information back to this body to determine what it is that you would like to borrow for and how much and, and in what fashion you would like to borrow. So I, it's a little different than what we did last year with the, excuse me, with the capital fund, because we were in the middle. Of a capital improvement borrowing plan where we'd already had money borrowed. So we knew what those projects were, so I, I just want to make sure to put that difference out there for you as you're taking this budget into consideration.
Laura? So can you just describe the difference between this and the CIP?
Yes.
Cause the CIP is, is a two-year, right?
Yes. I'm sorry, you continue, I.
Okay, so I, so the CIP is a two-year, and we, we borrowed for twenty twenty four. And now we're doing the twenty twenty five borrowing. And that is not necessarily for the projects that were on the CIP.
All right, I'll try, I'll try to clarify, so in twenty twenty three. We came, we came to the body to look to borrow money for capital improvement projects. Over the last handful of years, the city has borrowed in two-year cycles. We, we've done that to try to save money in both finance costs with our finance, financial advisors. As well as it also helps us save what we would get if we had a higher credit rating. So we borrowed in twenty twenty three for both twenty twenty three and then this year, twenty twenty four. So we have, we had notes and bonds that we took out to cover it. Our funding for those will no longer exist in twenty twenty five, other than funds that may be left over from those projects, then we can carry over that funding. We will come back to this body early in twenty twenty five, in all likelihood, the second meeting of January or into February. Present the capital improvement plan again to you for what we would look at wanting to borrow for the next two years. And what those projects would be, so in twenty twenty five, the projects that we've identified. As potential projects are in this budget. I, I hope I was clear about it, but if you have questions, please let me know, it is kind of confusing.
Glad you explained that and I didn't. Good job.
It, it's a whole lot, and a lot more will be coming early next year too, when we talk about long-range plans and out-year projects.
Well, and you know, and the money that we save borrowing two years out is considerable. Like, when Lowell and I talked about this, my goodness, when we started ten years ago. It was somewhere in that sixty thousand dollar bracket. So it was considerable, so we can save a lot of money by doing that, and, and I thought you explained it very well, cause. So anyways, so with that being said, any other questions? Or if anybody'd like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time also. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lee.
Yeah, motion to approve the twenty twenty five construction fund budget as presented.
Good motion, thank you, is there a second to that motion? Uh, Mary?
I will second Lee's motion.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Thank you, five D, proposed Christmas miracle contract, that's pretty much the standard contract with Christmas miracle. For the hockey rink and sliding heels and the, and the skating down there near the library, so. Somebody'd like to support that, they can do so at this time with a motion. Chad?
I would like to make a motion to approve the land lease agreement with Christmas miracle incorporated as presented.
Yep, thank you, is there a second to that motion, Matthew?
Yeah, I'll second Chad's motion.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, moves down to five E, purchase of Christmas miracle sheds. Originally, we had looked at purchasing a couple of sheds. And we turned the bids away as they were spendy, these are ARPA funds, and we have to allocate the ARPA funds before the end of December. So that being said, I'm looking for a few helpers, and we would just construct the sheds in place. So, if anybody'd like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Laura?
Like to make a motion to award the Christmas miracle shed materials contract to Menards at a cost not to exceed twenty four thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, is there a second to that motion? Randy?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote, oh, I'm sorry, Matthew?
Oh yeah, I'm just trying to find the bid here, I know we, there was three bids, and I think Menards was the cheapest. Was there a local bid to one of our local areas, and what was the, there we go.
Yes, and it was pretty close.
Builders First Source was approximately three thou, or two thousand dollars more. Okay, that's the pro build on Old Gavinin.
There are some convenience factors and support for that too, but we do have a motion on the floor. So that being said, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Thank you, that moves down to five F, purchase of Wolfski's Bay Shed. This particular one is just a small utility shed, and it was actually as inexpensive to buy it as it was to build it. So we chose to make a purchase, these again are your ARPA funds. So that being said, if anybody'd like to make a motion to support this, you can do so at this time. Matthew?
Just a question, how, how much do we have with ARPA funds that we have to use by the end of the year?
Go ahead, Eric.
So, one, well, let's just say that this, this gets approved. We have a, we still have about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in ARPA funds that are left. That we will need to obligate, and that came from funds that we had projects that came in under budget. So on December sixteenth, you're gonna see some options coming forward to this body. To be able to approve and obligate funds to go to different projects. Because, again, to repeat that statement, it was Mr. Schofield that said that by the end of the year, we have to have these funds that are obligated, so. We do have a little bit of money that's left over on here that we'll bring forward with some options for council to consider on December sixteenth.
Good question, yeah, thank you, Matthew, good answer, thank you. Okay, again, where are we at on this? If anybody'd like to make a motion? Could do so at this time, Matthew?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed Wolfski Bay Shed purchase contract to Premier Portable Buildings at a cost not to exceed four thousand, six hundred and twenty one dollars.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion? Cody?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Again, moves us down to five G, proposed water park fee schedule, Mitch is here this evening, if you'd come forward, Mitch. Talk to us a little bit about your fee schedule.
Good evening, so I'd been working with Dave and the Recreation Advisory Board. About the water park rates, the reason we're bringing it to council so early. Is because we're working on finalizing our winter spring brochure, and all of our rates go in that brochure. We're looking at finalizing it before next Friday, so we just want to get this out. And we also want to try doing like a Christmas sale, like a holiday sale. So families, if they're wondering what to get, maybe their kids or other people in their family. They could purchase a pool pass, that way we can maybe have an understanding of how many we might have. And the last time, I believe it was twenty twenty two, my first year. I came in front of council to look at raising our rates, because we increased our lifeguard rate from ten to thirteen dollars an hour. And that's kind of the reason we're coming back again, looking at raising rates. Cause we recently raised our lifeguard wage rates from thirteen to fifteen thirty one and fifteen eighty, or fifteen thirty and fifteen eighty one. Just to be competitive with other businesses, to try to attract lifeguards, as well as to say, say competitive with other water parks in the Chippewa Valley. Like this last summer, we lost a lifeguard that decided to go to Eau Claire, so we're hoping that offering this, we can have a better staff come this summer. And also other operating costs are increasing. And this past summer, we had just over sixteen thousand people, I believe, pay general admission, so that's why we looked at. Something small, just increasing the daily general admission, one dollar, that could help cover sixteen thousand dollars potentially. And with completing the project down at Wakanda with our new pool heater, I see our attendance increasing next summer, we think that did deter a few people from coming. So I'm hoping that we see that number increase to help cover those costs, as well as our family, family pool passes, youth pool passes, adult and seniors. We raised our family pool passes twenty dollars for both resident and non-resident. And I believe it was ten dollars for all others. And with our family passes, that includes anybody under, anybody under the same roof. So if it's a family of four, a family of ten, it's all the same, there's other, like Eau Claire, they do it where at different levels, their. Prices increase, so a family of three is different than a family of four, a family of five, so we're just trying to keep it simple this way. And then raising rates that way, and we're also looking at increasing our exclusive rental fifty dollars an hour. To four hundred dollars an hour, because we could potentially have to pay twelve lifeguards to staff that, we do start to cut a few. Depending how many people are there since it's only two hours. But we're also looking at expanding our hours, the mayor has asked for that, and we're looking at trying to increase our staff, so we can do that. I've talked with Pete, who kind of handles the pool, to see when we can open, so he still has time to clean. And just trying to offer different things, so even though we are increasing our rates, we're giving families other opportunities to come, as well as patrons that come to the pool.
We are proposing to remove one classification, we had a non-exclusive rental. Mitch doesn't recall that ever being used, that I'm not sure what the purpose of it is, you know, we do have a group rate. A per person rate, so I think if anyone were to come in with a non-exclusive rental, they could just use the, the group rate admission charge.
Okay, go ahead. Mitch, you mentioned some of the old rates, but are these a significant increase? Or just adjustments?
For daily admissions, it's only one dollar, for group rate admissions, it's fifty cents, I believe. Or one dollar, I can't remember off the top of my head, must have been a dollar, the family passes, it was only twenty dollars. And then youth, adult and senior passes, it was only ten dollars, so it's not a significant raise. And people can make that up within a couple of times of coming at six dollars a person.
Okay, are you pushing out, I mean, you said something about holiday special or something like that, is that the time of the year that they buy these, or?
We're just gonna put it out there, cause normally they go on sale like January sixth, so we're gonna try putting them on sale in December, that way. Some, some people like to purchase something like that instead of toys that kids might only use for a short time after they get them, or this is something they could use it all summer long. Trying to give them, just give families that opportunity to.
You know, something like this could be, just as, from a marketing standpoint, it might be kind of fun to offer, you know, some corporate, you know, three Ms or. Glass factories or places like that, and say, hey, you know, if you really want something really cool, get some water park passes or family memberships. You might want to think about that for, for some of these corporate places out there that, you know, might utilize that water park a little bit more, so just a food for thought. All right, so any questions for Mitch, otherwise if anybody'd like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Mary?
I would make a motion to.
I would make a motion to approve the proposed uh, Wakanda water park fee schedule as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Randy?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? We're all regular vote. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, that moves us down to propose solid waste fee schedule. Uh, Megan's here this evening. I figured she'd probably wanna talk. Megan, sorry.
Is your stopwatch ready, Mayor?
Ready.
All right, so uh, we're looking to uh, clarify some fees that we have out of the Salway sites. We have not changed rates for bulky items. These are bulky items um, that people bring to the Salway site. So furniture, carpet, that kind of things. This is not your regular household garbage that's covered under the utility fees that residents pay um, on their utility um, bills quarterly. Um, one of the things, most of the things are clarifications and there is some additions to things that we are accepting out at the Salway site. So one of the clarifications is on couches. We've previously just charged $20 for a couch, whether that's a love seat, a couch or a sectional. Um, with feedback from our staff and from residents. Some people feel that's steep for a love seat and thinks it's a steal of a deal for a sectional. So we're kind of um, we're gonna split those out. So a love seat would be 15, a like three seater couch would be, would remain at the $20 and then a sectional would be $40. So that's one of the clarifications that we're making. One of the other clarifications is just on our carpeting, um, to kind of reflect our current practice. Um, we've just been doing 25 cents a square foot, which is similar to what the, the um, if you took the medium carpet roll, we defined as a 10 by 12 um, room at $30, that works out to 25 cents a square foot. Um, but rarely do people bring in just room size carpet or know what size their rooms are. Um, so do, they've been kind of estimating it at about the 25 cents a square foot. Um, in there, we do have rounding to the nearest $5 um, with that and then a minimum of $10 um, for that charge. And then adding to our fee schedule that we have several items that we have been charging for that weren't on our fee schedule, but like are regularly brought in. Um, toilets is one of them. You would uh, never believe how many toilets get changed out in this city. Um, so that is $5. Um, adding like children's, you know, yard toys, the power kind of ride on toys. We get those a fair amount. So kind of clarifying some prices for that. And then um, with the closure of the Dunn County Transfer Station and then um, in the last year and a half or so, the closure of the ESW landfill, which is located just west of the city. Um, that used to take construction material. There's been a high demand for construction material disposal at the Salway site. Um, we had kind of been very hesitant to accept it mostly due to capacity and the ability to have our dumpsters hauled out and we didn't wanna start having people having dump trailers and all that because the community services staff needs to load dumpsters and just capacity overall. However, with people having to drive to Eau Claire um, to get rid of things, uh, we wanted to try to at least have a way to accept a a limited amount of materials. Um, so what we came up with is having fees based on a pickup truck bed, which we think is something that most people can visualize. Um, so a full truck bed would be $100 worth of waste or $100 to dispose of and then a half a bed would be $50. And we wouldn't accept anything, any larger volumes than what would fit in the backend of a pickup truck bed. Which I know there are varying sizes of pickup truck beds, but we're trying to keep it simple. Whatever size your truck bed is, it's $100 if it's full. Um, I did call around to some of the transfer stations in the landfill. Um, in Eau Claire to kind of gauge pricing. So um, for the fees that I was quoted for at the Seven Mile Creek landfill, their minimum fee is $80. Um, and that gets you 100 pounds of disposal, uh, which is not a lot. Um, at the GFL transfer station, it's $95 a ton is their minimum fee. Um, and that gets you a ton of disposal, but you do have to drive to Eau Claire. Um, so with that, I would take any questions from the council.
Randy?
Um, when you talk about the demolition stuff, was that treated with too?
Yes. Yep. The only thing we would not accept is shingles, mostly because they're really messy and have lots of nails and that makes things not great out there.
Oh. That is interesting. Okay, any other questions for Megan? Randy?
One more. Those kids' hoverboards. Is that under the children's toys here that are electronic? Or whatever you, I guess, power wheels?
I would say that they would potentially be more of an electronic device, um, potentially.
Okay, so gotta keep it till spring.
Yeah.
Well, you can't ride on it this winter anymore anyway. I think others in this room could relate to that, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, interesting. Um, well, thank you for that report and uh, you know, it's good that we are able to manage a lot of that debris, like the couches and the carpets and things that that we started taking out there that we never did. And I really appreciate the electronics collecting sites and also the hazardous. Uh, those are two real important aspects for the city of Menominee and 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 joining in with some of the townships. I thought that was a great move. So thank you for all your work. Megan, um, otherwise moving on, um, if we would like to uh, make a motion to support this, we can do so at this time. Laura?
A move to increase the solid waste site fees as presented effective January 1st, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Uh, Eric?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, do we need a regular? Okay, regular vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving down to the uh, request to write off uncollectible NSF accounts payable in 2022 personal property. Discussion pass motion. Jamie's here this evening. Eric, take it away.
Yeah, I can start it off here. So we do have a request for uh, being able to write off uncollectible NSF accounts payable and as well as 2022 personal property uh, tax that we were unable to collect through our normal means. Our treasurer, Jamie Schindler is here. Jamie, do you mind talking a little bit about this process and what we have to do to try to reconcile that and why it's important to bring it back to this body?
Well, we, we go back and forth every year with the personal property, you know, um, once they don't pay, you know, we try to collect and we just go round and round and eventually we just stop, you know, when they don't pay, we just stop sending them, you know? We just spend too much time and energy on it and enough is enough.
Seems like a pretty small amount, but.
It is, you know, some of the amounts just, it doesn't pay off. You know, and you see the Menominee Family Restaurant, they're still in business. Oh, we'll pay, we'll come pay. They pay their water bill, but they won't pay their personal property. You know, I mean.
Right, and now the laws have changed, so personal property, I mean, doesn't even exist anymore.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, but you know, you you can spend so much time on it and you gotta move on. It's not worth, it's not worth the $46, you know? By the time you put postage on it and you resend it in the mail five times, you know? It's an, it's unfortunate.
It it is a bit of a challenge. If you, if you take a look at the NSF um, memo that's on there, those are non-sufficient funds for checks going back to 2016 and 2017. We have a check diversion program, which is essentially a collections type agency that tries to reconcile non-sufficient or insufficient funds on checks. And these just happen to be two that they can no longer collect on. And then so for us to be able to discard this along with the personal property tax recommendations, we need this council's approval to be able to do that and write those off as uncollectible funds.
Used to be a lot higher 10 years ago. I remember. So this isn't, this isn't a very big dollar value compared to what it was 10, 14 years ago.
Yeah, and I believe the NSFs have to be, I think it's like seven years. We have to keep them before we can write them off. So, and we don't have any more NSFs until 2022. So we won't have any more and then personal property too, I don't think we'll have any.
That should be going away.
Yep, well, that will be going away. We might have some linger- linger- lingering ones. But the NSFs, we won't have any for a while now.
Okay, if anybody would like to support this with a motion, uh, we can do that at this time. Jeff Luther?
I make a motion to authorize the treasurer to write off the NF NSF checks totaling $515.68 and the uncollectible personal property tax bills totaling $1,342.16 as presented.
Thank you. Is it's um, is there a second to that motion? Eric?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Thank you. Brings us down to five J. The re-pro-proposed reallocation of available ARPA funds to pay for a refurbished ambulance. Think everything was here. The fire chief is here if you need to ask questions. Otherwise, Eric?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll jump in here real quick. So again, this is gonna be similar to what you're gonna see on, on December 16th. We have uh, some leftover ARPA funds that were available from the study that was being done at the fire department. And we'd like to allocate or have this uh, body authorize the allocation of those funds to go to cover for or overages for the refurbished fire ambulance, or excuse me, the refurbished ambulance that needs to be picked up by the fire department. Okay, and Chief Glass is of course here to provide more information on that refurbished ambulance and then some of the trials and tribulations it's taken just to be able to get that thing. It's been a process.
Okay, otherwise if anybody wants to support this with a motion, you can do so. Matthew?
Uh, yeah, I motion to approve the expenditure of $5,483.22 in ARPA funds to help pay for refurbished ambulance.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Eric?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote?
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to budget transfers. I see the um, city shop um, has requested a budget transfer of $5,000 and David's here this evening if we wanna ask any questions. Otherwise, if anybody would like to support this with a motion, you certainly could do so at this time.
Just be advised, this is an internal transfer within its own, within Dave Frank's own department at Community Services. So it's money that's available in one fund and we're just asking for it to be moved into another one. So we can uh, be able to purchase parts and other replacement uh, items for work down at the shop.
Okay, good utilization of funds. Chad?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bu- budget transfers as presented.
Motion been made. Is there a second to that motion? Mary?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schlue?
Yes.
Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moves us down to mayor's report. Um, well, got a lot to report. Uh, exciting news, the lights are on at the Wolfski's Bay. At uh, and it's just an incredible lot of work to do those lights. Um, uh, you know, a lot of credit goes to Nicole Keck, uh, who's had some volunteers come down, helper and Jeff Peterson, who's been down there. Oh my gosh, constantly. And uh, last night I, I spent a few hours down there, um, constructing some things and making sure lights were working and you know, it's, it's, the, the funny thing is, you tell your wife, yeah, I'll be home by 3 o'clock. About 7:30 she calls you and where are you at? Well, I'm gonna be home pretty soon, about 9:30, about 10 o'clock. About 11 o'clock, you pull in and where were you? And it's like, well, you know, well, it was down at the, the bay. We were hooking up lights and such, but um, but the lights are on. They look beautiful. There's a few more we're going to add to it and uh, people are already raving about it on Facebook and uh, they're already coming down and there's about five inches of ice on the bay uh, already. Uh, and so we're looking at uh, probably this weekend, baby, starting to skate out there. So that's pretty exciting. Um, you know, we've got ice skates and we'll plan on putting some fires out there and so forth. Uh, I'm hoping that Nicole will come and do a, a small report on Wolfski's Bay Island uh, in a week or so. But a lot of time was spent uh, getting the decorations out and and making the, you know, it's the, the thing about decorations is the lights worked last year when you put them away and this year they don't. So I don't understand how that works. They must get old with age. But um, but a lot of um, a lot of work went into down there and we're, the, the nice thing about it is every year, uh, we get a little bit better at it and uh, a little, a few more, a few more shortcuts. And um, I think it's real, it's, it's really gonna be pretty. The other thing I wanna mention that um, Winter Wonderland, the um, the ice, uh, the ground is now frozen enough to where we can support ice. So um, we're just gonna be starting to flood down at uh, the um, Winter Wonderland. And hopefully um, in a, maybe by the weekend, uh, it should be starting to be able to be skating also down at Winter Wonderland. So again, and two, two really good locations for kids to come outside and play and bring the families. And families, bring your kids and uh, make a night of it. It's, it's, it's a good outdoor event. So other than that, I did, I did wanna mention that um, the Winter Days Parade is scheduled for December 12th. Uh, they did reverse the route this year. So instead of starting on this end of the town and going that way, they're gonna start on the other end and come this way and hopefully that'll relieve some of the congestion. Um, on Crescent and I don't know, for the fire trucks to turn there by the um, candy shop. So uh, it should be a great, great event. The weather is already planned for a great night out. So come on out and and enjoy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric. Eric?
Yeah, so just a, a couple of things. I just wanna point out that uh, I wanna thank the department heads for all the work that they did in putting together the various budgets that came, came forward to you between our general fund budget as well as the utilities and the tax increment districts in the, in the construction fund. It, it's a complicated process. They made some, some tough decisions on their end for presentation and I, it just, they did a, a great job, provided a lot of help and assistance. So I wanna make sure that that is known, that they did great work. The other thing I just wanna recognize too is that this was a difficult budget process and you were asked to make some tough choices. And you, you know, you have groups that need assistance. You know, departments need assistance. And there's only so many dollars and, and it's not like you're getting paid the big bucks to make these choices. So I just wanna thank you for, for being part of the process and uh, getting us through it. And hopefully next year, we don't have as many challenges. But I appreciate the work and the guidance that you've provided this year.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, David? No? Uh, Kevin? It looks like your building's going up.
Yeah, it's definitely starting to take some shape over there. We're starting to get the steel structure up. And then the flooring, subflooring is this week they're planning on starting that.
Wow, I haven't seen you over there with a hard hat. I mean, you, do you have an office job or?
They don't allow me over there.
Wonderful. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Jamie? No? Uh, Kate? No, Ben? Round the room, Cody? Mary? Chad? Randy? Jeff? Matthew? Eric? Laura? Lee? No? Okay. Well, I, I, I wanna echo what uh, Eric has stated too. Um, you know, budget process, uh, the budgets are no fun. And behind the scenes, there's a ton of time taken. Uh, we've had some arguments, we've had some words, we've had some decisions that this is the best way to take this to council. Uh, David has been very instrumental on assistance, uh, David Schofield. Um, I think we've got a great team. I think between David and Eric, um, and this council, I think that you guys had a tremendous year. And we're looking forward to another meeting and then we start the new year all over again. So that being said, I'm gonna move on into um, claims. Uh, we have a revised claims list in front of us this evening. If somebody would like to make a motion to, to um, support the claims. Mary?
I would make a motion to approve the revised claims list.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Randy?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
We don't have any licenses this evening. Does anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn? Cody, you got your hand up. Go ahead.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Matthew?